Probably what?
And then I think we go in October, November, which is the end of the season.
Who's going to war or something? T-shirts, nice.
I'm ready, please.
It's technically still summer, so.
It is.
Well, yeah.
Technically, it's very cold in the morning, yeah.
It's getting darker.
Oh, I know, it's quite depressing, really.
More September than more August.
August is such a weird month, it's not... It doesn't, it never like, it's not like it guarantee, I know they don't guarantee probably, but it's not like, you know, July.
Two slash eight.
Yeah.
It's getting dark in the evening.
I've got to say that would be interesting, isn't it? You really shouldn't do it in August, because you can't guarantee the weather, but I don't know whether it's getting down to the weather anyway.
That's, that's why we stopped Carnival in August, because the last few years we really struck with the weather. Good at this here, that's for sure.
I've just finished my seven-page page submission on the Willowbrook. Seven, right.
On McDonald's.
It's not, it's not a public hearing, it's written representation. Climbing, climbing spectra, climbing spectra. Because it was the, the.
We're just talking about you for a couple of minutes. I just think R is such a fantastic thing.
Yeah, well, it bloody is for you, isn't it?
They obviously know about them to Southgloss, and Southgloss said that they have not any more technical information.
Weird, yeah.
No, it's not, it's the rule, really.
Well, I think that's an excellent truth, you know. So you inspect the weather. I mean, it's said that. Good off by us.
Didn't actually attend that meeting, but.
I don't think, I don't know, I think the.
I don't, I'm not sure, I thought there was a reference to it somewhere.
No, I think like, they just give you, obviously, climbing spectra text to everyone, and then they just have to sit down. Yes, you do, it's very close, don't you? No, another council, another council, isn't it, right?
It's your words, isn't it?
I haven't had enough time yet. Too soon to say.
I'll need you to do that, you know. I was watching Kevin's, he goes from there. What is this? In reference to vaccination procedures, identify and identify all measures to prevent infection in the room by the infected who are indicated to be subject to designated meeting parties. Filming, recording and material, along with local government authorities, make a note of this. This meeting, what, will be filed, though. Recorded the tape, recorded by the town council, certainly. Right, submissions from the public.
Good one, mate.
Name, right?
Stephen Horton, Snowbrook Coast. Yeah, I'd like to, um, I'll try to be as brief as possible, but it is a slightly complicated subject. Um, it's, um, a concern about road safety.
Sorry, hang on a minute, just a second. A wet patch on the floor.
Is that, oh, that's probably me.
Get it up out of there, but there as well.
Shall I carry on? Sorry.
Just wanted to be calling it.
Um, yeah, it's, uh, road safety on Bradley Stoke Way, um, between the Willowbrook Centre and specifically the Metro Bus Stop. On the other side of the road from the Willowbrook Centre, so on the leisure centre side. Um, so what I've, um, noticed on several occasions is, um, people are, um, instead of using the crossings, the light-controlled crossings are just going directly across from the Willowbrook Centre, let's say near the giant, um, shop on the corner, and just going straight across the road, running across the road, or ambling, depending on how they feel, vaulting over the, um, the two barriers in the central reservation, uh, in order to get to the Metro Bus Stop. Um, and obviously that's because it's such a, a long-winded way, the, if you like, the safe way. Just come out of the Willowbrook Centre, turn right, go along, press the button on the Pelican, on that Toucan Crossing, wait for the lights to change, which can be up to twenty-five seconds, I believe, go into the centre of the road, press the next button, another twenty-five seconds, across, and then turn left to reach the Metro Bus Stop, so, um.
There's at least two Pelican Crosses there within a range of each other.
Yeah, but neither are convenient if you want to go direct from the, um, leisure, from the Willowbrook Centre to the new Metro Bus Stop. So I'd say I've seen, um, various groups of people doing that, dangerous manoeuvre, really. Um, and what particularly concerns me, and I saw at half past seven in the morning some schoolchildren doing it. Um, so, you know, they're dressed in dark blazers, dark trousers, um, and of course in winter, winter's morning, it would be potentially dark. So it's, strikes me as being a very dangerous, um, situation, if you like. Um, so, um, that, that's a concern. Um, it leads me on to kind of think, well, you know, the design of, let's call it our town centre, because that's what the council calls it, of course, it is a unofficial town centre. Should we really have, um, that road that goes through there with a central reservation with motorway-style barriers, is, is, is really giving a signal to motorists to say it's okay to do fast speed, really. The design of the road, although the speed limit is thirty miles an hour, the design of the road isn't really, um, indicative of the fact that it's got a thirty miles an hour, uh, speed limit, which is actually, um, contrary to the, to the rules of highway design. Um, and in fact, when somebody about five years ago came to this council and asked for the speed limit to be reduced at the crossing just south of Savages Wood Roundabout, um, the answer, event that came back, uh, from, uh, South Gloucestershire eventually, was that they couldn't reduce the speed limit from forty to thirty because the architecture of the road didn't indicate, wasn't suitable for a thirty miles an hour speed limit. You'll know after that, there were two accidents near the Willowbrook Centre where young people, um, sustained life, um, life, um, threatening or what do you call it, life-altering, um, injuries. And, and then, only as a result of that, they reduced the speed limit on both sides of Savages Wood Roundabout to thirty miles an hour, which is completely contrary to what they were saying, um, in terms of the highway architecture. So, um, so I'm raising the, the road safety, uh, concern, uh, people crossing the road, uh, is, is very dangerous there. But also I think the whole design of the way that the road passes through the town centre needs to be examined, you know. I don't see why, why do we have a central motorway-style barriers in the only sec-, on the only section of that road through the town centre? Whereas if you go further down or up Bradley Stoke Way, you'll find it's a faster speed limit, but there's no central, there's no kind of crash barriers in, in the, uh, in the centre of the road. So it's completely contrary to, to what you'd expect.
Speed limit's only forty mile an hour, isn't it, Bill?
Yeah, yeah.
There's no crash barriers in the middle of the road.
No, crash barriers are what you see on a motorway, um, to be honest, so it just gives the wrong signal to, to motorists. So I'm not coming here with a solution, but, and I'm, uh, flagging up a, a concern and kind of questioning the design of, of the town centre. So that's, that's my point, thank you.
Anyone else want to comment?
Wasn't that put in after the accident there, that, that they changed from memory, it's a long time ago now, but from memory, that wasn't there until the accident, and they actually changed that to stop people trying to.
No, I don't think so.
There's not the other crossing. So from that, like, triangle section at the back of the Tesco, probably the second crossing. But they, but they've always had those crash barriers there.
Crash barriers have always been.
Before the Bradley Stoke Way was modified further up, that was the only section of Bradley Stoke Way that has, uh, four lanes on it, so two lanes either side, and it was the only section of the road where the old Tesco building, like, what, circa two thousand and seven, that had the lorry entrance and everything else on there.
That's right, yeah.
All those other issues and problems, it was all a bit of a.
Yeah, because the, the town centre, if you like, was just on one side of the road, and there was really nothing on the other side of the road. There was, at one point, there was no leisure centre, there was no Champs-Emer. In fact, there was no way of walking up from Alex Close over, over that bridge, that bridge, uh, over the brook there was installed, um, to produce the work, to provide a way for people to easily get to the town centre, but at one point, none of that existed, so it was just a road that, if you like, went around the edge of the town centre.
But if you look back at the way that road's configured, so the second crossing was put in to kind of link the nature reserve to the Tesco car park, to allow people to cross more safely. The existing crossing was there, which links you to the leisure centre car park, to the Willowbrook Centre on the other side of the road. Obviously, the new crossings, the new, uh, bus stops are there, you couldn't realistically put a crossing two places to bus stops, because that would be dangerous in itself. I mean, realistically, the only thing you could do is potentially put those pedestrian barriers either side of the road to stop the people crossing, you know, being able to just lift a leg, you know, you'd have to actually physically climb the fence to get over, like they do on, uh, school, um, outside schools.
The same height as that.
About waist height or slightly above.
Yeah.
You'd have to have that all the way down the middle, all the way down either side between the, um, where bus stops don't.
Whether St Glashere would do that, is a, is a.
Yeah, well, when, when the Willowbrook Centre was designed, um, I saw in the plans that the concept was that there was, they called it an axis of, I don't know, an axis of something. Um, so basically you'd come out of the Willowbrook Centre, there would be a crossing immediately there, so you wouldn't have to turn right and go along a bit, and so you'd be able to go across, and then that would meet up with the, with the road, with the path into the, into the leisure centre. And that, that sounds like a good design. Um, what we've got now is you have to come out, go to the right, cross over, and then straight on to the leisure centre. But if you go into the bus stop, the metro, unless you have to come out, go right, wait and wait, and then go left, so it's not, it's not a good design.
Yeah, but it's only a few minutes, isn't it, sort of thing at the most.
People are taking risks, this is the issue, you know, and.
Right, suppose we could write to South Gloucestershire, do you think, Charles?
We can, but I.
Put those points, but whether.
But I know what they'll say, they'll say, it's all about the accident record, and I guess that they're on, but that's what.
That's a terrible argument, uh, and that's what, that's what we've had before, you know, saying, they don't do anything until there's been a serious accident.
What about, uh, signage to say it's prohibited to cross at this point, could, it's done.
Well, attached to the barriers, sort of thing.
It's all about desire lies, yeah.
When we, um, come out from the back of the Willowbrook Centre, could there be, um, a sign that says, please don't cross, um, please don't cross the, the road, um, through, through the, what they call the crash barriers. Please don't cross it, um, at this point, please use the pedestrian crossing.
But I think that the, the people who would read the sign would do, would be the people who would do that anyway, not the people who just.
Ignore the sign.
Yeah, they say, um, pedestrians crossing at this point will be prosecuted.
Yeah, well, we can, yeah, we're gonna do that, yeah.
They'd probably be the same people that would jump over that sign, yeah.
And, I mean, in terms of the speed limit, what I would also say is, uh, there's quite a lot of traffic that goes faster than thirty miles an hour on there. Uh, let's say between thirty and forty, more, perhaps nearer forty sometimes. But every now and again, you get some idiot that thinks it's very clever to kind of put, put their foot down. Uh, a number of times I've kind of been in the vicinity there, and somebody accelerates from, you know, nought to seventy, uh, shooting down there. Um, it's very dangerous, you know, the combination of that and somebody trying to cross the road, potentially in the dark, you know, is, is a very dangerous one.
I've been having to take in the bus lanes several times, as.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're sticking to thirty, and then somebody shoots at, yeah, yeah.
Obviously, they, it's also quite badly lit there, because when you're going through it, it's dark, and you get the glare of the green and the red, well, not sort of the red, but when it's glaring green on the traffic lights, you can't necessarily see pedestrians actually waiting to cross the road, you know.
It is kind of murky because of the blue lights on the sports centre and the blue lights on Tesco, like.
It's an awful lighting situation, it makes it horrendous.
Well, all we can do is undoubtedly point to the battle, I think, and, uh.
Okay.
I could, I can look right if you want me to, but.
Do you think there's any point in writing, um, what you're noticing?
I personally, you know, there's a point in writing, but I, I personally would like to go with the idea of saying that, you know, why don't you do something with the central reservation, like putting in the barriers to stop pedestrians crossing.
Yeah, maybe have more barriers, maybe, you can ask them.
Because the crossing is at the, on the far end of it, the north, north end, it's supposed to be, no, it wouldn't be in that, that would be in the train, west end, wouldn't it? The one that comes out the corner of where McDonald's is planned, it's quite underused, it's very rare you have to actually stop at that one.
Yeah, this is true, yeah.
But they put that one in because those two axes are, that was, that was using the end of the road to get to the nature reserve to the Willowbrook.
But it's very rarely used.
Yeah, but it's useful for those that go into Savages Woods.
I guess stop waters, perhaps?
Yeah.
Going to the.
Okay, Dave, any more points of, yeah?
No, thank you.
Okay. Right, to receive apologies for absence.
Uh, Terry Cullen, Tomadich, Brian Hopkinson and Sarah Messenger from Bradley Stoke in Bloom.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, mate. Right, okay. Declarations by members under the Local Government Act, have we any?
I'm going to change mine, um. She, Bradley Stoke really can be removed now, and.
Aren't you part of that?
No, not anymore.
Oh, all right.
And also against your party as well, man.
Oh, right, yeah, are you not part of that either? Sorry.
Something just happened, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Any more for any more? Yeah, okay. Announcements by the chair, well, I have no exact to say that I finished my seven-page or eight-page, uh, Willowbrook submission, so that's, uh, just gone today. Should be good enough to read. Okay, confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the seventeenth, seventeenth of June, right, right, right. Okay, thank you, Ben. Any more, second here?
Have a second here.
Okay, Andy, so, all those in favour?
One.
Come on, three.
Okay.
Five in favour?
And one.
One abstention. Do you initiate levitation, sign and date the last paper, please? Thank you.
Go on, do the stamps, like, just go forward. I don't miss one, otherwise you'll be called in the office. My special trip.
No, I don't do bucky-chack, but.
Oh, right, okay, yeah.
I do it on purpose now, and this one is super tragic.
Signs, have you?
Since before my time, yeah. There are only, um, we've got lots of about my, um, cabinet.
Going back to nineteen ninety-two.
If you have a spare week with nothing to do.
I'd like to see for the Bradley Stoke ten K.
I do think sometimes, if I'm looking for something historical.
That's actually got the touch.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Like, kind of similar wording, basically, saying, uh.
Yes.
I wasn't sure whether it was more kind of a decorative thing, something to do with poppies or something.
I think it had poppies on there.
Right.
I think there might be, I don't know whether they start, because they're all, you know, they all look like they're computer written, and they weren't, none of them were handwritten, so I'm guessing, yeah, we probably do. Okay.
Right, item six, six point one, updates on Broadway Activity Centre site development.
A quick update, no, it's just to say, um, John is currently meeting with prospective contractors, so ten votes will be brought to September for council meeting for discussion decision.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, we've got an update on the leisure equipment at the Judy Group, at Judy Centre.
Yeah, you have that table, that's great.
Sorry, it's six point two, not six point one, I've just noticed.
Yeah, I said six point two, yeah.
No, Graham, it's one up there.
Oh, right, sorry.
No, I'm writing it myself.
Oh, right, sorry, yeah, yeah.
Uh, these, I'm, I've, I've been waiting for some additional quotes, so I did decide to bring something back to this, so I bought this because it's like indicative of what might be possible. Some people have provided pictures, and other people have just provided a list of equipment, so, um, um, we talked last time about proposals including groundworks in the region of fifteen, twenty-five and forty. What we've got in front of you is, um, just under fifteen, uh, thirty and approximately forty. Um, so, I don't know if this... From chatting with various people, the option two, uh, in a circular format, so that's the way they sort of advertise that kit, is the picture you see there, but, um, they've provided a very basic image in that right-hand picture of it on a circular, uh, wet pour. Uh, and the idea being there that we can have a lot of floor markings to, um, you know, like that constitutes, uh, approximately a fifty-metre running track round the outside of that circle. So, um, the idea is that there can be lots of floor markings as well, so it becomes like a workout area for, um, quite a few things, including the actual kit. What are these companies, Graham, that supply these? Uh, the top quote is a company, I believe, called AMV. Their middle quote is a company who I found quite, uh, impressive in terms of the stuff, and they're called Compan. Uh, and a lot of their equipment is actually, um, made, uh, within Europe as opposed to sourced from, um, China and places like that where a lot of the stuff comes from, and the, the longevity of it and the quality of the construction is meant to be, um, I am told, significantly better. Um, that area as well, out of that quote, because I was a bit amazed by the groundwork's cost, but if you think that, it does actually include a hundred and fifty square metres, I think, of wet pour, you know, which is a safety surface. Um, it's all of, you know, I've got, that's the sort of the breakdown of that particular second quote there. Uh, but these are sort of, like, these are just to give people an indicative idea, like I said, I'm, I've got other, lots of other quotes floating around. Uh, but I, what we hadn't got was anything to do with actual, you know, what's the cost of actually installing something. The option one is very much, uh, this, I thought, probably a bit more sophisticated, but the, I don't know if anyone's familiar with the play equipment that's gone in at Stoke Gifford, behind the leisure centre there, but it's really, it's like six bits of kit that have just been put on mats, so they're not really connected.
Little Stoke, I think, do you mean Little Stoke?
Little Stoke, yeah. Um, which is obviously a cheaper way of doing it, but I, I, I'd like to think that we, um, possibly aspire into something a little bit more sophisticated and weatherproof than that.
What's here was like depicted for option two is what I always imagined this being.
Okay.
So not, I mean, this looks like equipment that isn't got, really got moving parts.
Yeah.
It's just static stuff.
Kind of static, yeah.
Yeah, robust things that people can use of all ages, and to me, that's like what I envisioned the idea being when we discussed this. Back a couple of, strategic planning.
There, I've got.
Year, two years ago now.
That's sort of bigger versions, if people want to look, uh, if I pass that one that way, and that picture, that's the same picture, but it just gives you something you can see a bit better than. Yeah.
But it seems to be less equipment in the more expensive one, you've got twelve separate pieces in the first quote.
Yeah, but that second one has got, that combo three is like a large work, that's one bit of kit, but it's a large workstation with several bits of it.
So in fact, it, it amounts to several pieces as opposed to twelve pieces in the first one.
Well, you, you could, yeah.
It just seems like a lot less equipment for the money.
Yeah, but what you're getting is very simple, you're getting nothing really complicated in that first.
Otherwise, it's complicated in the second one, it's, it's better set, it's, it's fixed stuff, nothing moving.
I think that the, what, as Graham said, what inflates this, the second quote, is the, the wet pour, and I guess then the markings on that ground.
Yeah, because if you actually look at the equipment costs, they're actually, uh, surprisingly comparable.
But do we not then lose, I mean, I think, uh, again, as Ben said, when we talked about this two, if not three years ago initially, it was to go on the green to be part of the green, whereas if you take it either way, you're creating a hundred and ten square metres of wear, it is of, of more wet pour on the green. So you're kind of.
It doesn't, that doesn't.
I think that's quite a good idea, because it means it's all weather use then. And we won't have saturated.
The stuff at Little Stoke, that, that, that's just, just looking at that, is, that'll be rained off for most of the year, that'll be completely unusable.
That's just on separate mats, is it?
It's just on separate mats and there's no real, and it's just bits of kit, so the thing about that sort of kit, you can only have one person using each bit anyway, whereas something like this, you can, um, particularly with, like, a lot of the companies now on that sort of second bit, they, they, these people have, uh, like, signs where you download apps and it gives you workout ideas and suggestions and stuff like that. I thought it was even something, because we have, uh, we have, what do you call them? Um, bootcamp-type things here, don't we, as well, and it might be something we could even link into the leisure centre, where they might want to provide exercise classes using that kit as a way of encouraging people to maybe join the leisure centre, or, you know what I mean? I think there's a lot of things, really, if you have a lot of workout stuff.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so the, the main aim of the equipment, i- is it health and fitness related, or is it for them to, sort of, they use to, is it for fun as well? Because, um, I think they would really enjoy using this, but it seems like there's, it's very similar, the types of things that they can use, like, there isn't a lot of variety. So it's mainly climbing and, you know, what is the ma-, the main aim, is it to, for them to, uh, for health and fitness, or is it also sort of?
For, for, for a start, it's for the community as a whole, uh, it's not just for young people.
Okay, it's actually more aimed at adults, I think.
So when we were discussing this at, like, strategic planning, we were making the assessment, now we've got lots. So when we were discussing this at, like, strategic planning, we were making the assessment that we've got lots of individual, um,
children's.
tactile play areas, if you like, that are for a younger audience, and it's just saying, well, what are we providing in terms of for the broader audience?
So do you think older people would, I can imagine kids would love it, but do you think that peop- older people would, um, would do it? Because I, I can't imagine people over thirty using it.
I think it's mainly for youth, isn't it, really?
I think people over thirty use that one.
Yeah.
There's lots of.
I think we, we have a lot of people out there, yeah, that, that use that field over there for sort of jogging around and bringing bits of equipment and doing, running up and down.
Yeah, I think if it's, if it was like those exercise, um, bikes and things like that, older people would use it, but just these climbing things, what I've seen in areas in Bradley Stoke, the monkey bars just completely get overtaken by kids, and kids love stuff like that. I don't really see a lot of older people using monkey bars, I think.
Well, the ti- I think the type of equipment we've got elsewhere is deliberately engaged at a younger audience, whereas it's engaged at necessarily that younger audience, it's engaged at, it's trying to fit everybody.
It's just, it's trying, and that's the way new, that's the way outdoor gym equipment is going, they're, this, this, it's moving away very much from just having six workstations.
I mean, certainly there is space where handquarters had, were very well used by people in their forties and fifties.
What were these based on, sort of thing?
Uh, it was probably more of these kind of things, and along with the seafront, basically, people were running on the seafront.
Have you got an installation cost for option one at all, where it goes, equipment and groundworks, no, uh? Well, that's what they sent me, so.
All right, yeah. Presumably that includes.
I would, yeah, I would.
Well, groundworks is, you know, a quarter of the price of this one, yeah, of course, but that's what they, they're wet stuff, I think. They're not putting it on anything, they're just whacking it on a bit of matting.
Just putting some brass matting down.
All right.
I think the only thing which would concern me, because I think it'd be such a success, that you'd end up with people who run commercial elements of training and what have you, would start to use it, and then you'd become the op- the, we'd have the opposite problem, it might be a victim of its own success, in terms of, it was there, it's supposed to be for everyone to use, not people like in organised groups and this, that and the other. You have the same predicament of, of people out elsewhere with stuff.
Okay, so at this stage, this is merely an update, so thank you for that, Graham.
But it was sort of to give you an idea of the costing and where you want to go now.
Personally, I'd like the option two explored in more detail.
Yeah.
And given more options and layout proposals.
So, well, that's why I mentioned option three, because option three is the, the sort of stuff that, all you can go by is where they're going in, and option three is the more sophisticated version now of moving part equipment, so your u- because a lot of the stuff in gyms, anyone who goes to a gym will probably know, is the use of sort of resistance ropes and fix, you know, mag- like the magnetic weight stuff and things, so, um, there's that, it's like a new generation of indoor, outdoor, as opposed to the sort of thing they've put in that Little Stoke, uh, which will probably have, you know, medium to long-term maintenance issues because of the moving parts associated with it.
About option three then, safety wise, didn't you look to extra pieces of equipment like that, or it?
Yeah.
Does that, option three include more of the wet pour, larger area, or?
Wouldn't necessarily be, uh, that's just to give you an idea of how much some of that other kit is, it could just be you reconfigure it, but the id- I just thought, uh, I like the idea from what I've seen from the research of having, um, because it's a bit of a sort of no-brainer really, isn't it, that if you can put other exercises there for the cost of just marking out lines on a pitch, on an area, which people would use in conjunction possibly with, because a lot of people do their training, you know, even the gym that I go to, people use apps for training and stuff like that, because otherwise a lot of people feel quite lost, they're just confronted by equipment, so something that can actually take it onto that level, where it's actually giving you a, a workout based on the equipment you've got in front of you, um, I think is, is a creative way.
Is option two, um, attractive to older people and thirty then, do you think?
The research says it is, yeah.
I think, um, people in their late teens and twenties possibly, but
Push-up doors, bench.
I, I think people over thirty, if they do want to do something outdoors, they probably just do running and, I don't know, uh, or if they wanted to do a lot of exercise, they'd probably go to a gym, but, um, monkey bars, I definitely think will attract youth, because I've seen how much they love dangling from things.
But also, you've got to remember, there's going to be people in our community that don't necessarily, you know, want to go to things like gyms, who might be over thirty or what have you, and they want the accessibility and they want the, they should be free and they should be promoting a healthy living and lifestyle and all those things.
I think what Nicky's saying is right, I think the older generation may well look at things like Graham said about a magnetic resistance kind of equipment, things like that.
I think then to ex- you would, that would be exploring option three then, really, if they, and if councillors willing to spend that much money on it.
Sure, then if you're spending thirty thousand or whatever, service time.
We're talking about going out to see if we can get grant funding, isn't it, but we need to have a firm proposal to look at for the grant funding.
What people do, from the research I've done, is people will often start off and then add to it.
But then you're back to the wet pour element, or the.
Well, no, not necessarily, because you might create space on the, the wet pour footprint to add additional bits of equipment.
Which was that question in the first place? I mean, if, if that's the case, and if that additional ten K is too tricky just for the resistance and equipment and other equipment, that's not perhaps, as Nicky has mentioned, the stuff that's going to appeal to younger people, might appeal to older people, and that's within that groundwork, sort of, that wet pour area, I think it's worth looking at that.
I mean, if younger people can do it more easily than the older people, then it's going to be overtaken by the younger people.
I was thinking about areas where I've seen this before, and it seems to appeal to a broader spectrum of people.
I was thinking, that's, yeah, it's, it's like, I've, you know.
I know we don't necessarily have the weather.
People over thirty still exercise.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, they do, but the type of ex- like, for instance, if I'm, um, I would feel a bit self-conscious, ha- dangling around, because, uh, but, I mean, everyone's different. If people feel very confident, they might be willing to do it, but, um, but I, because I've got young kids, I know they love doing stuff like that, and they find it quite easy to do stuff like that. Whereas once you get to a certain point, it's not that easy to do stuff like that, so.
Well, it's pretty, it's, it's quite easy with that sort of layout to put in, and they do do that in, uh, this particular company, you have a bit of sit-on kit as well.
I mean, those monkey bars are really high, because that guy is.
And there isn't actually, there's no steps up to it, it's there on that middle bit, the line that looks to the back.
If you've seen, uh, places where it does attract adults and it's, uh, is not overtaken by young people, then it might well work, but in this area, there isn't really anything like that that I've seen, so it's an unknown.
Well, this is what we're trying to do, this is what we're trying to, we're trying to, you know, we've given ourselves that passion.
But that, the porters had, which is exactly what we kind of think we look at, it really works well, and it is used by all generations.
Okay, yeah, because it's separate pieces of equipment rather than on one concentrate.
Yeah, I mean, they've been, they've put it, a lot of people run on the seafront, so they've, they've spaced them out on the seafront.
Where's this at?
What's it at, on the arena?
The, um, three hook sport, uh, three hook sport in the public, and a straight through that you can leave.
So what have you got in the bridge for this?
We haven't.
Nothing at all?
I think it would be with, I don't think there is any, because the original idea was we were going for lottery funding and we were turned down because Bradley Stoke.
I thought we did have what we do, eh, but that's how we came up last time, we spoke, Graham, and I think Rachel was there, and we sort of had a full, I think, I mean, we have access to it.
I think there's money in the Muga, I think, and I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure whether that's actually for the local equipment, but it is, it is about going out and grant funding, we might have a, a prime, that phrase, with some, I don't know, something. But it was really to, obviously, because Graham's got so many ideas, not ideas, I mean, he's had a lot of input from loads of companies. We need to steer from councillors as to which, which option develop further, really.
I think personally, if we're going to go for it, and we're going to go for funding on it, then we might as well look at option three, which includes equipment, which is, as you said, may appeal more to the older generation, rather than the pure physical strength things, resistance, that kind of thing, so if you go to look for funding, then we might as well look.
What kind of funding is it? Uh, the usual Sportingland, those bits and pieces, there's still, I haven't, I haven't checked it as of today, but yes.
What if we apply for that first, and, uh?
No, they'll want to know what.
Yeah, they want to know exactly what you're applying for funding for, so they'd need to know the equipments and costings and things, it's a bit of a, it is quite.
Well, the sort of options two and three, then, we need to see what, exactly what equipment there is, and, uh.
It's like, it's out of the Graham, I wonder the pictures, I mean.
I think Graham should just go and, and look to get potentially option three, get that as our.
What, which is option two plus?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like resistance stuff.
And then, um, go from there in terms of how we fund it.
Yeah.
But not, uh, if we go to option three, not the pure strength hanging from bar stuff, but stuff that people can come and sit on and.
Yeah, yeah. But it is, all, all I can say is, I do know a little bit about the fitness world, and it is a, a big movement towards calisthenics and using body weight as opposed to your own body weight, so that's what you're doing, it's not that you have to be super strong, you're just using your own body weight to actually exercise your muscles, and that's the sort of the, the way the thinking is certainly going at this moment in time.
If you're quite confident that you've seen places where it is widely used by the public, then I trust you, because I don't know much about it, but I was just thinking what I would personally do,
Yeah.
which is not the same as what other people in the public would do.
I, I think that's, option two with maybe a few of the fixed pieces of kit, you know, like the cycles and stuff like that, because they're all being updated into different formats.
Hmm.
But, um, yeah, but, yeah, so explore that really, something like option two plus, so we're getting a bit of compromise in terms of the, the sit-on moving type stuff. And the other nice thing about some of this as well, is because I did actually check it out, and I do think it's sort of, i- is that, um, yeah, well, one of the leaflets, it says here, because that was the question I asked, is some of that fixed stuff, people in wheelchairs, for example, through the upper body strength and things, can actually use this kit, whereas some of the, you know, sit-on stuff, et cetera, stuff you can't use, whereas you can actually, you, drive a wheelchair under a bar and sort of do upper body exercise and stuff like that, you know.
In the Little Stoke Park area, um, where there's a lot of balance things, where people can balance, walking around, and then there's those zip slides, I've seen quite a lot of older people using those type of things. Um, but that, yeah, that is, um, it's more sort of a play area type thing.
Now, this is, they've put in six bits of kit, just right round the back of the, uh, building, so they're exercise, actual exercise units.
Yeah, if you, you're, you know more about it than I do, I was just wondering, um, it's obviously going to appeal differently to different sections of the community, and if there is a wide section that it would get used, then that's fine, it doesn't have to be used by every section of the community.
Well, we know we still have what we said, and we, we, Graham looks at the option two, but with some pieces that would appeal to.
Yeah, yeah.
What about exercise bikes? Any chance of getting any of those, is there, it's quite, uh.
Yeah, there are, so, long. Long trainer, I think.
Right, there's a piece of what, um?
Because the exercise bikes outside the last two, are they, I think we said before, cross, cross trainer, that's it.
There's new genera- there, there's new generations of them, yeah.
Stand on it and you move the handle.
But like, we, we had something like that at duty, didn't we?
Nobody have used, but I guess that was in the middle of the play, children's play area, so that would probably put adults off going and using it to celebrate.
But I, I never, ever saw anyone use that.
Like, children used it a lot, yeah, because it was in the play area.
Okay, so Graham's going to look at option two plus.
So option two.
Option two plus.
Option two with some, what did you say, movable?
With a couple of maybe other, a couple of, um, move of resistance?
Yeah, yeah, like, like bike things, stuff, cross trainer type things.
Absolutely, yeah, that's exactly what, uh.
So we'll explore.
I still have a vision of you on that bicycle smoothie maker from the, uh, open skate park.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, I remember that, bicycle smoothie maker, I remember that.
That was at the, um, when you were there.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I remember you saying, "Crikey, I couldn't do that." I remember that, no, yeah.
Right, that's good.
Can we have a, like, a pose and a second, just so that we've got, like, a trail there to go on?
Yeah, second, anyone? Brian, do you, all those in favour?
Thank you very much.
Right, six point three.
Update on position three.
Update on position number equipment.
Just on the other, the other side of your.
This is again very much indicative costings from one company on steering away in costings from other people. Um, so if you remember the story so far, um, convert the end hard court to a Muga. When I started looking into that, I realised that could potentially compromise our netball hires, because by putting a division between the second and third courts, it would mean the run-offs would be less than two metres, which would not comply with netball England. Um, therefore, the only solution possible was to extend the hard courts. We then shied away from that option and went for the option down, or possibly exploring dual use down the overflow car park, and then for expressed concerns around, um, health and safety and conflict of use, we decided to explore the extension of the Muga again. Uh, I've got one quote back, uh, and that for, to expand it, again, we are talking over, uh, just approximately ninety square metres of additional hardcore, and relocating those two huge floodlights that are down the far end, so that's the first cost we have there. Um, and then the second cost, which I must admit sho- shocked me a bit, but that, the reason for that is that you are talking about four sides of, uh, heavy-duty sports fencing, hence the little picture I thought I'd put in, uh, because that doesn't come cheap, and that is also, um, it's like got a lower rebound noise to it. So if you are developing a facility that might be used extensively, um, you, you won't have the sort of travel you get from a ball being kicked against existing ball walls that we have on, on the courts, because they, they sort of reduce the sound impact, and they're of industrial strength. So, yeah, that's thirty-five metres times ninety point five metres, uh, so that's two times thirty-five, two times ninety point five, so that's a lot of fencing if you're doing four sides. And the Muga ends as well, so that would enable then, the middle court would then comply with Sports England and have a two-metre runoff, um, on that side. Um, the actual netball hire would benefit, because we'd then have two courts with two-metre runoff at both sides, uh, at the moment, we only have one court two-metre runoff, and that is the central court. Um, so, yeah.
So what's the demand for that all then? Could you let the second court use it, you know?
Yeah, it is used regularly, so you quite often use all three courts.
So just, just.
Evening netball and weekend league netball.
And the second question is, what have we got in the budget? That's forty-five grand, that's fifty, fifty-eight grand approaching.
That's close, that, again, the, these are like exter- the plan is to externally fundraise.
Right.
Development of sports.
That's two, that's not one combined, that's two separate things.
Is it?
Yeah, so that is just your basic, and this is more of an all singing and dancing.
Yeah, that's just, that's just expanding the co- the hard court, and that's then installed in.
So it's both.
It is both, yeah.
Oh, it is both, all right.
Yeah, okay, right, so, um.
Ah, you, a lot of the point I was making was that's given us a figure at least for the extension of the hard court, that is an all singing and dancing substantial.
Yeah, yeah, this, this bit, this bit.
Yeah.
And the idea of it always has been that it would be free to use, so it's not.
So would it be a good idea to go to Sports England and the grant providers and, uh, ask them how much they're prepared to dish up towards this and also this on?
Design back in the leisure equipment.
That's a bad.
And see, yeah, okay, well, I think that's, uh, suitable plan to go ahead with.
But we, I'm also, like I say, awaiting some other, some other quotes, so that might be, the thing about this particular company is, um.
Who are they?
Um, they're a company in Sheffield, they're the ones who actually in the end put in our shelter. And both John and myself, just the groundwork for that shelter, I've never, you know, there was people on site, but what's those amazing level tool thingies? They like proper, proper.
Level tool thingies?
You know, the, for doing ground levels.
Exploders.
No, no, they have, there's a special name for it.
That's the odd line, you mean.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're using all that for doing the base for the, that shelter and it's just, um, yeah, they need that.
So a, a piece of basic groundwork, I thought it was very impressive. Okay, so on this one, should we wait until we got some more tenders?
Well, we're not tendering it as yet, but we're, we're.
Or, uh, interest, uh, expression of interest.
One of, one of the things, one company that I was awaiting a quote said, well, it might be cheaper to go and get. A Tarmac company or something to do that as opposed to doing it through, but then, like you then said in the next sentence, that then invalidate your claim on the, uh.
Oh, right.
The company doing the installation of the mooga.
Oh, right.
Something about, you'd obviously have to, you know, be like a separate, I think, I think people who put in.
Yeah. Right.
So in this case, I do like to get a bargain, but I do think it's probably best to keep it all under.
So we, we need some more, we need some more expression of interest on, on this then, before we can decide.
So this is actually also on the finance agenda.
Is it?
For Wednesday, so a recommendation from here would be good to take to finance.
Yes, that we.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only got one tender, one, uh, expression of interest somewhere at the moment, you said you're waiting for others.
Yeah, well, and, um, yeah, if we, well, that, that's, that's what I would suggest is that we. Firm up some quotes, cause even this guy, I sort of said, just give me, he says, well, I'm not sure, I want no more information on the. Floodlights and my stuff, I said, just give us, me some indicative costs at this time, but I gave him as much information as I could on those floodlights.
So he's got part of that, isn't he?
Yeah, but so, uh.
Okay.
So is, do you put firm up more quotes?
More quotes, yeah.
Yes, so.
And, and you get an indication from grant funders as to a level of funding available?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I suppose that, anyone want a second there?
Oh.
Nikki, my question is in your.
Yeah, I just want, so did you actually got a specification drawn out for this now, because everybody wasn't, they were quoting the same thing or? Or they just kind of back with what they think will do the job?
But I, I think.
Cause they're all gonna quote differently, aren't they, huh?
No, I've got the, the sort of, I, I would be interested to go back to this person to start off with and explore exactly the cost of the fencing. Because one alternative was, but we do need to, yeah, cause if we take him out the fence to lengthen it, we. It might be that we put in a cheaper fence and then almost like sit a low fenced mugger. Within the perimeter fence, if you know what I mean, so you're not paying for three metres of heavy duty fencing, but you have like, say.
Is that, is that three metres there, supposed to be, like?
Apparently, that, which is, you are, you are paying a lot of money, that is an awful lot of, you know, top quality fencing, Gavin.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, it might be, that might be an alternative, is that we replace with the existing.
Yeah.
The extension of the end and the division and then sit within that, um, a lower level rebound wall.
Right.
That might, see what I'm saying, that might be the new.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, see what you mean, yeah. Okay, so.
So firm up more quotes for the claim, an indication from grant funders as to the level of funding available, proposed by Roger on the second slide, please.
What is in favour? Y'all? Right, okay. Right then.
I wonder whether, do you want to move, um.
Oh, yeah, if you can do, yeah, 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 mhm. Right, so that is, which one is it?
Um, it's eight point.
Eight point, yeah, okay, we, that's my proposal, we'll do eight point four to the four, right, second in. Nikki, four, blah, 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 right.
Very much.
Right, please, Steve.
Thank you.
Let me see here.
Uh, so this is our, uh, the annual act of remembrance that we carry out on Sunday each year. Uh, you'll be aware that we start here, we go, uh, towards Willbrook Centre, uh, and we have a parade and that's really, really good. Over the last few years, we've dealt with an increasing number of irate motorists. Where they have attempted to go round Cordon's, which are put in place by the police, um, uh, and we have volunteer marshals on those intersections. We have listened to some, uh, comments from the public, we always have a, an L F E session at the end of each, uh, event. Uh, we've suggested we put in place signage at some of the key places, just on the weekend coming up, so people know. That they might be delayed for five or ten minutes, cause that's how long it takes for the parade to move up, yeah. So this was a proposal to purchase fifteen, uh, signs, it's the same firm we've got quotes from, uh, that produced the signage for the ten K.
I remember.
Um, so it's whatever they use, it's exactly the same, uh, we would use Remembrance Sunday rather than a physical date. Therefore, they're usable on a, an ongoing basis, because if we put a date, uh, on there, they would instantly be no good for the following year. Um, so that's, that's our proposal, it's, it's to make, uh, the public aware that it's happening. Um, because not everyone, it would appear, knows that Remembrance Sunday is held on Sunday morning. Around the eleventh of November every year, it's to take a little bit of the heat out of it, because people do get. Surprised when it happens and it keeps my adult volunteers a little bit safer than otherwise.
Okay, I mean, it's a hundred and twenty five pound, I'll go straight in and propose that, you know, it's, it's, it's just small amounts of money. That, uh, will make things a bit safer for you, hopefully, so, uh, I'll say proposal, seconded by Andy, all those in favour? Every one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You let me have my email, your bank account details, if they buy back to transfer.
That's fine, um, you know my bank account details, cause I, but I will do it anyway.
Rachel always likes to have it, our finance manager likes.
That's absolutely fine.
Each time, yes.
Thank you ever so much, thank you.
All right, seven, seven point one, now Graham, can we, uh, just pick out some of the same reports we don't need to go live by live?
No, we don't, that's what we said last time, then you questioned it.
And then you, and then you went, and then you went through it in a live by live.
Okay, well, if I go through the headline news at the top, then you can ask questions on the rest of it. Um, well, since, uh, last two months, regular youth work sessions delivered at the skate park, uh, Jubilee Hard Courts and surrounding areas, that's around here. And our girls' project sessions, there's been various additional sessions, uh, particularly over the summer period. Uh, a lot of those are ad hoc, where I just respond to, if, I know, if it's good weather, I know there will be lots of young people. Uh, gathered at usually the skate park or around here, so I will, I will go over there and spend some time there. Um, had two young people on school work experience, uh, very late this year, it was almost like the last week of term, which was, I'm sure that's not how it usually is.
For how long, a week?
Um, for a week, full time, yeah, um. And, yeah, they were great, um, previous year I had two young women, this year I had two young men. Uh, and yeah, we, um, I have to, uh, give the, uh, the school additional, um. Consents or additional consents, because I'm obviously out and about and, uh, they were out and about with me. We, we actually did some of the research on the fitness equipment, we did like side visits to Littlestoke and. Uh, we went to a regional participation network meeting, uh, with colleagues across Southgloss and Bristol. Um, they helped me with a lot of the, the food chair pickups and stuff like that and, uh. Much to my astonishment, cause I thought some of it, they might have found it a little bit on the boring side, but they, uh, they really enjoyed the two, the week. And gave lots of positive feedback as well, which is really good, and as the week went on, they started asking more questions and started getting more curious about stuff. Uh, so hopefully they've gone away, A, with an insight into the workings of Ballystate Town Council and B to the, uh, workings of, uh, a youth worker. And some of the projects and project strands. Um, bum, 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 um, A S B risk-taking event, um, I, I don't understand, I think, um, what was A S B?
Uh.
And social behaviour.
Tony, I think Tony.
Yeah, Tony, Tony was at, uh, was at the event for a while, it was, um, outside at Willbrook Centre, which was unfortunate. Because it was a very windy night, so my display initially got blown off the tables and I tried propping it up against the tables and it got blown over again, so. But anyway, um, we weren't overwhelmed with numbers, but we, it was very, very useful in terms of the quality of some of the conversations, particularly. Uh, a few parents of young people who I know about and, you know, they sort of sought me out for a chat about stuff, which was really positive.
Did you get any P S, uh, C O's there?
Uh, yeah, the police were there, the fire brigade were there, the school was there, uh, Southern Brooks was there. The drug and alcohol people from Southgloss were there, so it was about, it sort of was motivated by that little spike we had, you know, the social behaviour. But it was also about young people and risk-taking and advising parents about risk-taking behaviours and what they might be able to do in terms of seeking support and information and stuff like that. So, um, yep, regional participation network I mentioned, and the community shelter, that was in terms of one of the little projects I was, um, that was successfully installed, as you probably well know. Uh, and again, it's good to know that as a community shelter, not a youth shelter, I have witnessed it being used. Positively by, um, a lot of parents with their little kids, particularly on hot days and stuff like that, as a sort of shelter and a bit of a.
Well, that's it.
Oh, so, yeah, all right, I've seen that, yeah.
It's for a place, uh, called thing, right?
Yeah.
Oh, right, yeah.
And it's a bit more, although the other one was probably more aesthetically pleasing, it, it does, it does provide actually a bit of shelter and a bit of windbreak and somewhere to sit down. So, uh, yeah. Recruitment though, that is, um, another one of my part timers has got another full-time job and so I've got a particular crisis around recruitment. Um, of, and the need to get some additional staff in, uh, I know.
Some additional staff, how many do you want?
Well, I've got, practically none at the moment and.
So you've got Graham on his own?
Um, and, you know, we had approved a strategic plan in a whole package of recruitment, unfortunately, for various reasons, we've not been able to recruit. Uh, so that's going back to strategic planning, um, to, uh, discuss and hopefully endorse again for around the recruitment. But what I'm saying is, I would urgently like to, um, jump into the main body of the report and recruit, recruit and I'd urgently like to try and recruit to the girls' project. Because that's an active and successful project and I really am, absolutely, I've got one person now working every other week, um.
And you did start off with one.
Well, we had.
In charge and two.
Yeah, then someone left on the turn, he never came back and then another person went off and did their college course and blah, blah. Um, yeah.
What, they recruited especially for the, the girls' thing, are they?
Well, they, they were, if you were going back a little bit, back, spent too much time on it, we, uh, initially, to get things started, we, we used another organisation to. Um, we employed them to deliver the girls' projects and then we took people over and they, the staff came with it. Uh, and now all those staff over the space of two years have moved on to other things.
How often do you run this, uh, girls' and young women's project?
It's once a week plus trips and excursions and we've got trips coming up, um, we were gonna have a residential in October, but I'm having to put that on hold at the moment. Cause I don't have, I've got any other staff. Uh, so what I'm saying, given most of the money for the girls' project actually comes through external Southgloss funding. Um, it would be, yeah, can I, can I just go?
Oh, right, yeah.
Can I just go ahead and advertise ASAP and we discuss, we discuss the wider funding, uh, strategic planning. So that's an action point I'm requesting really for tonight.
That's from Southglosses.
Well, you've already kind of settled that anyway, haven't you?
Right.
I think, I'm never quite sure what's been agreed sometimes.
I didn't realise it was, uh, Southgloss funding, that's, that's even better, so, yeah, okay, yeah, I'll propose that then.
To more than recruit, yeah, go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone second it, Nikki second it, all those in favour of it?
I'll second it. Just stay in there for both, okay.
Yeah.
Start with what you're saying.
Immediate recruitment.
We're obviously gonna be, because we've not many.
Right, last sentence, basically.
Okay.
Okay, what is in favour then? Y'all, y'all?
How many, how many positions are you recruiting?
Well, I would like to try and get three staff again. Um, the other action is a minor one really, but I think Ben will remember when he was, uh. Was chair last year, is the food chair project, I was just chatting with some of the Tesco duty managers down at Hatchet Road by Parkway. And they're just sort of undersea, short staff and I just, and they get sort of community points for demonstrating what they're doing for the community. And I just thought it'd be nice of us to offer, send another letter of thanks, so they can then pass it on to their head office.
Yeah.
It was very positive, we received the last one that was.
Yeah, cause apparently they very rarely.
Get letters of thanks.
Get letters of thanks and they, they appreciate it.
They, they suggested this.
Well, no, I'd, I'd, I'd chat, I'd chat with them, because that's the benefit of using a smaller store, you get to know the staff.
Send a letter of.
But if you're fair enough.
No, I, no, I, I actually, no, I actually said, would it benefit if I talked to the council about another letter of thank and they said, yeah, oh, that'd be good.
But after we had the master, we got reading from just onions to onions and bread.
Well, actually, that's the point, because it's mainly just bread and paint at the moment, so we might go up there.
Right, I think they take my name a bit too seriously.
Send them another letter, say, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Send the two grand to forty two grand.
It's a great, it's only so much you could do with a great big pile of onions.
Garlic, it was, there was a lot of garlic.
Was there?
Oh, lovely, lovely bringing it round.
In terms of A, in terms of A S B, stop the vampire problem.
There's tons of bread at the office.
Okay, right, thank you for that, um, yeah, you've done the mooga thing, uh. Okay, right, you happy with that?
Yeah, okay, unless you're allowed to expand on any items.
No, 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 you're all right, thanks. Right, can I be stuck in blue, update by steering committee, you got something for that?
Yes, I have the, uh, report, your, your report, and your agenda back.
Got some nice pictures. Yeah. She's not here tonight, so, on my word, they are.
Nice pictures, aren't they?
No, I didn't know, garden of the season, I know, unfortunately.
Did you rent her?
No.
You can it. Could be something to do with it.
Yeah. There's some nice looking gardens, yeah, that garden here looks cracking.
Yeah, I thought that was a garden, yeah.
Yeah, that's really nice, isn't it? That's cracking, yeah. Progression Park on the east, meadows being sowed. White flower squares, that's good. Right. Some very nice pictures in here, which is what we're hoping.
Good elegance, isn't it?
Yeah, it's big, yeah, you seem to have some really large butterflies in the community then. Yeah, don't they just? I found, I found the orchard the other few weeks back, you know, I've never found, I've never seen, found it where it was before, you know. I kept hearing about the orchard and there's.
One lane.
Yeah, yeah, you just walk up that path between the ponds and, uh, the leisure centre and it's, it's there, it's on the right, isn't it?
And the left, and the left as well now.
Is it?
Yeah, it's been extended.
Got any apples on the trees yet? Quite.
I don't know, I haven't noticed, they have been for years, um, although, um, uh, some people come and collect them all, um, which they weren't very happy about.
Oh, that happened last year, didn't it?
I'll take them all.
Pick them all, yeah.
Back and carrying massive baskets and they just take, take all of them.
Oh, that's not, not in the spirit, is it, you know? Okay, so that's, uh, why we said update.
Do you know how much this is related to this, but I've had quite a few of the residents complaining to me about, you know, the area, um, where the pond is behind Te, uh, where you go, behind Shepherd's Walk, there's a little pond, um, you know where, uh, Dewfall's Drive is?
Yeah, it's called Dewfall's Pond, I think.
Yeah, Dewfall's Pond, yeah. Yeah, and, um, it's all overgrown all around it, and I don't know if that has to be left like that for some sort of nature reserve issue, like because of habitats and things, it has to be left, or if it can be trimmed and things, because it's all.
Wouldn't have thought, wouldn't have thought that's part of the nature reserve, not Dewfall's Drive, wouldn't it?
Well, then you saw something, um.
If it's by a pond.
Yes, I think there are, because I think there was issues, because I think South Gloss went in and decimated it.
They did, and they repaired it all, had a nice fence around it, but there is a notice on, there's a kind of a gate or something which is closed, I believe, but there is a, um, a notice on there which may have a telephone number on it, but I think it's South Gloss who.
Yeah, especially.
Maybe season due term.
And I've had a couple of people say, um, oh, you're on council, can you get, what you wanna do about this?
Well, you can tell people, it's nothing to do with us, but we will pass it on to South Gloss, um, and raise it with them. I will also mention it to Sarah Messenger from Badde Stoke.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Because I think she's obviously aware of, um, grant.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Okay. No, don't get excited, but are there more of you of the S T C policies and procedures?
I've got questions.
Have you?
Yeah.
Okay, then, grant awarding policies, start with.
My questions on the first policy are, so I've been on the council since two thousand and thirteen.
Have you?
And. The sums on here, in terms of the amount available under each pot of money available to the individual groups. I don't think we've ever reviewed one of those, and every year we get to year round, we always discuss, and you have a substantial sum of money left sometimes in the overall pot of grant aid. So my four various different aid pots on here, so my question is, is the maximum amounts available under community development grant aid, grant aid and youth grant aid correct, or do they all should be reviewed?
My gut feeling would be that five hundred pounds, especially for grant aid and youth grant aid, is adequate. Um, grant aid, quite often, there's not much money left in that, youth aid, we're seeing more scout and guide groups, um, well, scout, well, actually, yeah, scouts and guides and brands and mangoes and that sort of stuff.
More access, that kind of.
So, and I think five hundred pounds is good, is a good amount.
Well, I would agree with that.
I mean, I think five hundred pounds is a good, but I'm just saying, I know, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, I've always named it that way myself, and obviously, you know, I've several years on, that what five hundred pounds stood by back in two thousand and thirteen opposed to what can now buy in two thousand and nineteen is significantly different.
There's still, still a nice pot though.
Yeah, I think, I, 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 my gut feeling is that I think that it's a reasonable amount, and community development grant aid, I, to be honest, I think that four thousand pounds is quite generous.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a lot, yeah.
That, that, but actually, that budget, I'm not budget, I've been got because that money wasn't anywhere near our spend.
If you put these others up, then people can then go to the next one.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Regardless, you know, so, so I think, I would agree with you, Charlotte, but four thousand is generous.
Yeah, and if you can grow, you do, uh, other local sources.
Yeah.
I mean, I, uh, state, yeah, but, uh.
Someone you do like two hundred.
Yeah, it's two hundred pounds, and my thonder is two hundred pounds.
It's a thonder.
Yeah, so we are quite.
I mean, it's the expression every time, what we actually want, it's a part more above five hundred, because it can award below five hundred. And we have done it, I mean, I think, we're sat here and someone applies five hundred, and then put in like one hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and actually, they're not that high, and we, I mean, we're all happy to receive them.
Yeah, okay, that's just, it was just a question, I had to agree with that, that was all.
Right, seven, three, two, safeguarding children and vulnerable adults.
And you, then you're happy with it, because you have a proposal, a second group, happy with it, is?
Yeah, I'm happy with that, so.
Yeah.
I'll be second. Four bones and figure.
Thank you.
Yep. Right, okay, next one is safeguarding.
The proposed changes, changes are in red, yeah.
Children, you know, you put some.
And it's just to really, as it says, brains review this, and it's wording amendments for clarification. So it reads the same, like children and young people all the way through, and young people weren't mentioned in the title, and, yeah.
So my question. So I, I've seen, like, um, safeguarding policies elsewhere, and they are purely labeled as safeguarding policies, so they don't end up in the situation we've got here where it's like children, young people, vulnerable adults, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because by nature of doing that, I still think there are probably elements of society that were potentially missing out from there. So, I mean, I personally would like to see renamed as just a safeguarding policy, full stop, not describing the individual elements of society lately in the title. Yes, I agree, um, with pretty much all the changes beneath it, but again, it'd be nice to have seen it written a bit more, however we can necessarily inside policy changes, so it's not specific to groups, it's like all over the, you know, the broadest, broadest.
Well, I think South Gloss should use that sort of, uh, basic heading, sort of thing.
Safeguarding policy.
No, safeguarding children, young people and all.
Yeah, I guess it's because safeguarding adults is completely different from safeguarding children, because children always need to be safeguarded, whereas with adults, it's only if they're in a vulnerable situation.
Yeah, well, they are vulnerable, they say it's vulnerable, vulnerable adults.
I'm, I'm using the language that's the government language for standard D B S clearances, and you get D B S clearances for work with children, young people and vulnerable adults.
So that's why it's phrase that it is.
It's just echoing sort of standard.
Well, I'm just saying, I've noticed ones which have been re, recorded safeguarding.
You've got to remember, this isn't to do with the, because we work to, or I work to the South West Council's joint safeguarding procedures, this is to do with, it's more to do with, um, well, the two policies together are to do with how, um, we regard our staff working with those people and how we, um, you know, in terms of recruitment and, uh, safeguarding in recruitment and stuff like that, really. So that, again, that's one of the reasons I sort of, because I thought that might not be clear necessarily to you guys around recruitment, so that's why I just put in, please read this section in conjunction with the other policy, because that's about recruitment of staff and safeguarding in regards to our staff working with them.
It, I understand Ben's point though, because when you're safeguarding, you want it to be universal, but it's, um, in certain situations, like if a woman says, oh, um, I'm living with a partner who beats me up, but if she says, I want to live with him, there's nothing you can do for safeguarding, because she's not considered, uh, if it was a child, even if they say, I want to still be in that household, you would still raise it as a safeguarding issue, the child doesn't have the authority to decide, whereas if it's not a, if it's a sane adult, we can't safeguard.
So that's why I agree with the, the text itself being more descriptive, but I would prefer the title just to be a bit like, this is a safeguarding policy. But anyway, um, the.
So you haven't got a problem with the text, it's just the title.
No, no, just the title.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, it's the title, South Gloss uses.
And then the.
I think it sets out clearly what it's all about.
Two on the second.
Probably got it from South Gloss, actually.
Yeah, I keep that, I keep that in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Section two on second bullet, why is vulnerable adults missed out on that section?
It's section two, the second bullet.
So you've added the young.
There, children, young people, it doesn't say vulnerable adults.
Okay, well, we could put that in, wouldn't we, I suppose?
So I'm just trying to figure out, there's lots of different places in here, we're going.
So I see what you mean, and then, so that would apply, so a bit further down actually, and look in the, that one there, where it just says children, young people, it doesn't say vulnerable adults.
But you go further down the line through the next paragraph, it's children, young people, vulnerable adults.
Yeah, so we need to just add that, and then, and.
Yeah, yeah, so we need to just add vulnerable adults.
You've got to be, without sort of scanning it all, there's some type, there's places where I actually put in for consistency, then removed, because it was coming from like a quote.
Right.
For example, in the convictions rehabilitation of offenders act, they talk about working with children or vulnerable adults, there's no reference to young people. So it does depend on.
Yes, slightly different, it's in a quote, yeah, you can't change that one.
But is this only for the recruit, so this is only for the D B S check, or is it for general safety?
That's a safeguarding.
It's the tank actual safeguarding policy.
Yeah, so, oh.
Yeah, we're allowed to do D B S, yeah, uh, so I can do those.
So you want.
So it's just those same pages.
Where it says young, on that, yeah, on that second bullet point, you want vulnerable adults added in, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
And also further down.
Yeah.
Uh, with the consideration will be technically in the, will be the context, because that just says children, young people, so you need vulnerable adults put in there as well.
On the residential trip, eh?
Yeah.
Uh.
That's the same name, isn't it?
Yeah, no, I was talking about this one here, we need to go into that one as well then, yeah.
That one and that one.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
I'm just trying to remember exactly what you're doing. Okay. I suppose we need to propose those changes.
Well, we can propose the acceptance of the policy as well.
Yeah, we can propose acceptance of the policy then, would anyone like to propose it? Nikki, who would like to say anything, anyone?
I'll just say.
And maybe all those in favour of those suggestions? That's, um, right.
Why don't you propose simply?
Okay. So, safer recruitment policy statement on the application of D B S checks.
Uh, there's no changes required to this one?
No. No, there aren't, I didn't talk it. Okay, so, that's been, uh, passed before, uh, presumably.
Just need to propose a second round.
Yeah, I'll propose that.
Yeah.
Five seconds, all those in favour? One, two, Nikki, um, I was just trying to find some of the best, trying to find some of the theory.
Thanks very much. Oh, you should come on next, I'll say.
I'm one handed here now. Street-based youth work and policy considerations.
Right, there's a, uh, but it is literally on the last page again, we're on to do this one, it is literally on page, page, page sixteen, I think it is, the addition of the advice websites, so there's some new ones that have been taken out, which don't exist anymore.
What's the telephone number for?
Uh, any others, because obviously this is, this would be for youth workers to have, so if there were any useful numbers that they wanted to add in, it's not just five, it's, I mean, it could be, it says there, phone numbers for your own use, please add details and carry with you.
So I don't, so I don't disagree with the three places.
Like the amount of years.
And, but, um, in, in a way, why are those three specific ones, and there's lots of other useful safeguarding websites for protected groups, et cetera?
It could have been, they, they were just three organisations that we're actually working with in partnership at the moment locally. So, so as a part of the, um.
Co's got a bit, doesn't it?
South Gloss Youth Work Partnership. Uh, Cuth is just come online as a, a free, uh, advice line, so that's been published eyes, that's publicized a lot within uh, schools, not the youth organisations, off the record have got a particularly good website. Um, and, uh, the diversity trust that we work with now, they're the providers of, uh, L G B T Q plus stuff within the South Gloss Youth Work Partnership.
So where it says useful information, do you think it would be worth adding, this is not a definitive list, there's.
No, I'll go off, actually, it's a short description of what each of these is actually for, I mean, in case, at the bottom one, L G, uh, B T Q, I think a lot of people are going to be able to associate with that, but I didn't know what Cuth was. Um, I know roughly, I know roughly what off the record is, but I'm just thinking of people using this policy, it would be nice to actually have a very short line, so I want it to be.
They are, they are hopefully gonna be, if we ever get them staff, youth work staff, so, um, yeah.
I do, well, yeah, do all just the people reviewing or.
They're part of their induction, but be referenced to those.
That's easy enough to.
Yeah, it's easy enough to do, but.
Strung line for each of them, yeah?
I think that would be useful.
Okay, should we add that in?
We can do that.
Number five, do we have, are we missing something here?
No, that's, if you look on where it says phone numbers for your own use, please add details and carry with you, so the, the you, we would hope that the youth workers would identify other useful numbers and then add in five to ten or whatever, that's just like an, an introduction.
If you're a merchant.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so it's supposed to be a sort of work in progress, really.
So those numbers, so off the record, Cuth and L G B T Q plus, are those for mental health, um, so to reference like support for mental health and things like that?
Uh, information and advice and counselling, yeah.
Okay.
The thing about Cuth is it's all, uh, done online or by phone, so there's, uh, but off the, off the record have, uh, now got a bit of a, bit more of a presence in South Gloss, it used to be more Bristol-based, but South Gloss Council now have had stuff.
Okay, Ben's proposed it, there's also a few, uh, changes, anyone second it? Franklin, all those in favour? Yep.
Thanks very much.
Again. Right.
If you'd like to add the area of that triangle.
No, I didn't want to show you up. Right, grant funding applications, service level agreements.
No, no.
No, we have community development grant aid, right, these don't really update, there you are.
That was in your agenda pack.
Yeah. It's been hectic few months at the effort, um, you're not on this, everyone, eh?
No, I'm on the side.
All right, yeah. Who's doing all the microphone stuff then? I don't know.
There's a few people doing it, because at the Wheatfield event, there was, um, what's that lady's name with blonde hair, um, um, and there was a guy called Mike.
I think that, that picture's from the Wheatfield event.
Um, yeah, Adele, Adele was doing the mic stuff, and there was a guy called Mike doing the mic stuff as well.
Good name for a guy doing the mic stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Mike, call him Mike.
Right, so how much do I ask you for?
Lady from British Baker.
It's not, it's just an update.
Oh, it's an update, it's actually an update, all right, okay.
Because it's community development grant aid, obviously, they give an update every couple of months, so.
Okay.
That's it, on that one.
All right, we've done eight point, eight point three is nothing.
Nope.
Eight point four, we've done that.
Yep.
Eight point five is nothing.
No.
So, meeting's closed. Next day, fourteenth of October.
I can change.
See you all there, yeah, it's got a way of that, isn't it? Sorry?
October already.
I know, it's this year, it's this by us now.
Yes. Well, because we have another summer, that's right. Well, just a week of it.
Yeah, it's a wonderful.
Coming next week though, apparently, well.
What's it here?
It's a long time, I don't know yet. I don't think we know.
I might not be here on, uh, Wednesday, Sharon.
Oh, who's sharing the, uh, live line?
Sharon.
Hi.
I might not be here on Wednesday, I'm packing time versus the police, so you don't need to call it, so. Depends what the traffic's open.
Right.
And what time you finish.
Talky, talky.